Okay, all right, we are gonna get started here. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order. So because we have some remote participants, I am going to ask that we do some introductions. Uh, Councillor Brown, would you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Carrie Brown. I'm a council member from District Three.
Great, thank you. And Councillor Morton, go ahead.
Hi, I am Jennifer Morton, District Three.
Super, thank you. Okay, and I think we are otherwise good to go. So just some logistics. So if you are joining us remotely, if you would change your name to your first and last name, so I can address you properly, have that for the record. And then when you speak, if you would start by saying your name and where you live, and we are asking folks to keep their comments to two minutes or less, and we'll help you out with that. If you are speaking on any particular item as we go through the agenda, make sure that your comments are germane to the topic. And if you wish to speak, make sure that you are just recognized by me before you do. And uh, if you have multiple questions, if you would ask all of your questions sort of together consecutively, that would be helpful because we don't really do like a back and forth in this setting. Yeah, I think that is it. Okay, so the next thing is to review and approve the agenda. I think that as per what is currently on the agenda, I don't think there's any adjustments that need to be made, unless anybody has any different information, even have any suggestion. Connor, did you want to?
Yeah, I think that might be good to add an item about, I guess it would be vacancy planning.
Okay, yep. So we'll add that to the end of the agenda. Actually, to be fair, let's add it to just before the executive session. Yeah, okay. Anything else? That is it. Okay, so on to general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is otherwise not on our agenda. If you have something that is relevant to one of these agenda items that will come up, then you'll be welcome to address it as we go. But if it's not on the, on our agenda, otherwise now is a good time to bring it up. So uh, yeah, we'll start with folks who are with us in person. Anyone in person wish to address the council?
Go ahead. Two-minute constraint because there's a lot to cover here. We can't seem to clear the leaves from the storm brain, so we've got water backed up in the crosswalks, but we can yank the last, we can find time to yank the last available bench for people to sit on on the nice days. It's just a symptom of a dysfunction. We can take curtain shelter away, we can kick the can down the road on restrooms for year after year, the publicly owned restrooms. Now we've locked in, last week, somebody locked the information booths as if those pamphlets really need protection, whereas people have been sleeping in there who are unhoused, and it just, it reeks of a... It's not just incompetence, it's not just drag and anchor, it's cruelty to the point of sadistic. We've got people sleeping outside, we know it, we do nothing about it. We commissioned studies for day shelters. Try sleeping outside yourself. Just really get, get, get a little conscious. Closed cantions still aren't available, I'm objecting to that once again. School street closure, the sign went out on the weekends, Friday or Saturday. Several calls were made warning them that the sign was out. Everybody cleared the street last night, and then no construction started this morning and people started parking there again. I diligently followed the alternate side parking rules and I was on the odd-numbered, even-numbered side on the even-numbered day, it's still got a warning ticket. It's dysfunctional. You read the website about alternate parking, and it's like, from here to the end, it's like, which end? It's really, it's dysfunctional communications. Maybe you can put your new communications expert on. Does that come out of my two minutes?
Nope.
Just so you know, you are just at about two minutes now, but go ahead a little bit and wrap it up.
Your autocracy here with, you know, it's like Putin and I'm the, you're Navalny, and I'm sure glad you don't have access to Novichok or my underwear for that matter. Why autocracies fail, they, they in practice, they don't hire the smartest or best people. People might be threatening, they hire the dimmest and the most mediocre. You get a government of third graders. Autocratic leaders in practice are serving their own regime and longevity, even if it means neglecting their people.
Thank you. Anyone else with us in person wish to make a comment? Okay, well then go to folks with us digitally. Peter Kelman, go ahead.
Thank you. I spoke with Brenda Siegel yesterday. She asked me to please bring to the attention of the City Council and others, particularly since we have two city councillors who are going to be in the legislature. The announcement by the Department of Children and Families, which was picked up by WCAX and also an article by Vermont Digger, is rather misleading. The, this is not an expansion. This is going back to pre-COVID rules that, and in fact, making some of them even more difficult for people to qualify to be in motel rooms. And by actually penalizing them, for example, there are almost no hotel rooms, motel rooms available in Washington County. But let's say there's one in Addison County, but the person who needs the room really can't get away, doesn't want to leave Washington County, they have, their doctors are here, their children are here or whatever. If they don't take the Addison County offering, they can't qualify for any for a very long period of time, like I think it's a year. Brenda has the details. But it's a horrible decision, and it's been missed because of this, because of the VCF press release, it's been misreported in, in, in the media. Digger got it a little clearer than WCAX. But I know this is a state issue, but it has tremendous impact on our area because we simply, in our area, we do not have the rooms in the motels. And so I want you guys to be aware of it, and I hope you will look into it. I brought it up to the Homelessness Task Force, which I'm now on today. Okay. But it's something that's gotta be attended to. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Peter. We appreciate that. Anyone else with us virtually wish to make a comment? Okay. All right, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I'm moved to approve. Second.
Is there any further discussion about the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Okay, so that passes unanimously, so we don't need to do a roll call. And so we're gonna move on to appointments to the Planning Commission. And so we have an applicant, Brian Mills. Check, check, check. One, two, yeah, okay. I don't know if it's been five minutes, but we're here. We're ready to go? Okay, cool. All right, so we're gonna bring you back together then. Thank you for that. Right, Brian Mills, you're here with us. If you wouldn't mind coming up to introducing yourself and telling us about your interest in serving on the Planning Commission.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Brian Mills. I, relatively new, relatively new resident of Montpelier. My family and I love living here. I'm a consultant. My work centers around land use permitting and zoning, helping projects get approved, so seemed like a good fit. And I look forward to digging in and helping with the city plan.
Super, thank you. Any questions for, for Brian?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, excuse me. Is there a motion? Yes, Jack?
I move that we appoint Brian Mills to the Planning Commission.
Hey, there's motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and opposed. Right, so that is unanimous motion carries, so we do not need to do a roll call. Thank you.
No curing balance.
Thank you for your willingness to step up and serve. We appreciate it. Okay, all right, so legislative agenda. So, which is a little bit funny because Connor and I are gonna be moving that direction, so it's almost like we're, what are we, what are we gonna be asking of ourselves?
We've got forty percent of our delegation here.
Here already.
Other conversations with myself this year.
Well, and you're on the advocacy committee, right? So do you, it's you and Lauren and Jack, right? So I may, and there's nothing you want to, do you want to weigh in on this at all? Because otherwise, I'm gonna try to be with them.
So when we set this up, I mean, I can weigh in actually to start.
Okay, sure, go for it.
So, you know, as you know, we've had an active legislative agenda. We have our advocacy group here. I asked them to join us tonight just so they could hear the conversation and get a sense of what was important to us. We took last year's agenda, went through it, took off things that either weren't as relevant or had been accomplished, you know, and added a couple of things that have come up in conversation this year and drafted that to put out for your conversation. But obviously, the council is free to add, subtract, multiply and divide as you see fit. So with that, I'll let the, the committee members weigh in.
Yeah, I mean, probably not a surprise. It's similar enough to what we had last year. There are a few additions, a few subtractions, but like big issues, we're still dealing with the idea that, you know, state employees are not coming back to Montpelier to the level we may have anticipated or hoped. I think that leaves a lot of tumbleweeds rolling downtown affecting our economic development, affecting our park and affecting everything. So you'll see that's listed as the highest priority there. One thing I think we gotta look at is if they're not coming back, we have a lot of empty lots in town, right? Lots that could be used for housing for a number of different projects here, riverfront access. If you look at like what Sustainable Montpelier did with the maps of the red, you know, that, about the river there, it's pretty stark. So, you know, if state employees don't come back, we gotta use those lots. So definite priority as we recover from COVID. You know, the recommendations of the Homelessness Task Force, I think we've done our best at the city level to try to have some social services with the liaison position, vouchers, trying to help out the best we can with sheltering. But it is limited, and you know, as Peter Kelman just said, this is a, you know, it's a regional problem as well. So we really need to shake some trees at the state level to see if we can get some funding to do right by folks in our community here. So hopefully we can do that. I could blab on on all these, but you know, PFAS certainly, Lauren's on top of that, still being an issue that we're following very closely. And yeah, and still trying to tap into some of these, some of the, the federal money that we're getting. And I think we have a great team with Leonine cracking that. Keep in mind, we didn't bring Leonine on board until like, I think a few weeks into the legislative session last time. And I thought they did a fantastic job as far as communicating with us regularly and just keeping a thumb on the pulse of the building. So I don't know if other committee members want to weigh in.
No, I think that's a good overview. You know, people can see a lot more detail in here. I mean, it, I'm wondering if it might be helpful just to hear since our lobbyists came, just like any reflections on the role that you play just as we get to a tough budget season and like are figuring out what we can fund for next year. Just, I don't know, like explain a little bit how that worked for us, having you all advocating for us in the building. I don't know if that feels okay, Anne.
Oh, yeah, that's great. Yeah, that'd be wonderful.
Either one.
Either one, whatever you're comfortable with.
They do not. That's kind of feedback you came for.
So I'm Maggie Lenz. I'm the Vice President of Strategic Communications at Leonine Public Affairs and work for the Government Relations Team.
And I'm Nick Sherman, President of Government Relations at Leonine Public Affairs.
Yeah, so I want to be clear, I didn't come in here prepared to, you know, talk strategy. But I do want to talk about last session versus this session. I think Connor pointed out was key. We did come in, you know, the second year of the biennium, it was a little late. So it was more, from my perspective, identifying opportunities that we could find easily and then trying to work through those. So I think we were successful working with Senator Cummings on the Tiff district language. We also had, you know, some last minute fixes to work on getting money for dispatch here in Central Vermont.
More to come.
And more to come, exactly. Yeah, so I think we're, I'm really happy that we've engaged with you earlier this time around. I think it gives us time to actually go through these opportunities and create our own as opposed to just trying to at the last minute, find ones that are easier to access. So yeah, I mean, we're gonna be having, you know, a closer meeting with, I'm sure, the lobbying team and with Bill to talk about these priorities and actually create strategy. Cool. The fact that you have, you know, your mayor is gonna be hitting the legislators soon. Connor Casey, Kate McCann, I think it's just, Montpelier's in a great position, and Lauren's gonna be in the building. But in terms of legislators, I think you're gonna be really well positioned to, to meet a bunch of your goals this session.
Yeah.
Anything you want to say?
Yeah, I think, and then in terms of budget, state budget, looking toward the 2023 session, I think there are gonna be some dynamics sort of globally that are similar to the last couple of years with a large amount of federal money being on the table in the one-time sense. But also, you know, the forecasts now are looking for, in terms of the base budget, a pretty level year in the fiscal year to come, but beyond that, there's some shortfalls projected. And the dynamic, even, even last year when things were a little rosier, has been that leadership in the House and the Senate have been eager to find ways to maximize the impact of that federal money that has come in. And I think, we think that will continue. So as you think about opportunities, or you discuss opportunities for Montpelier to leverage that, you know, that one-time, but those one-time buckets are, are really important. I think we are gonna see, as has been the trend, base spending being harder and being more more concerned about what that will mean for the out-years when revenues may not be looking so good. So that's kind of the dynamic at this point, as we see it.
Yeah, and I think, you know, you're talking about homelessness, there's multiple issues that are not just Montpelier issues. They are, they're regional issues, and so that means that, right, exactly, they're statewide issues. And that's going to mean that we've also helped by finding collaborators and other stakeholders and other towns and cities who need similar things and work with them when possible.
Toward that end, I think, to your point, Nick and Maggie, about the, the one-time money. One of our biggest concerns or opportunities, I guess, is, you know, there is a huge amount of money, infrastructure money, inflation reduction money, all that, those kind of things. But because Vermont's so small, it's all going to the state, and so it's hard, you know, and I would assume it's teething up with other communities and the league of cities and towns, but making sure those funds go into programs from municipal governments. I mean, it's still upon us to then apply for them and compete for them, but if they don't even get to the table to go to local governments, which I think a lot of them were intended to. You know, we've seen that in the past where these funds come in and the state kind of gobbles them up for their own uses. And so transportation money all goes into Route 89 and never makes it to, to, you know, municipalities. And even, you know, even the dispatch money that we fought so hard for, they just reallocated some of that to state dispatch centers, even though this was for local dispatch money. So, you know, I think it's making sure that these things stay where they're supposed to be going. I just wanted to call out for not just your benefit, but everyone's benefit, some of the, the things that were new, the old ones don't think matter. But just, so we specifically said, you know, use the infrastructure bill money to provide funds to local government. Obviously, we called that out. We added the Strengthen Laws Against Human Trafficking. We had a pretty robust conversation in here for several meetings about that issue, and wanted to be sure we were on record as, as saying that. It says, provide funding for Phase Two of Regional Public Safety Dispatching Equipment, but that was before we found out that Phase One had been delayed. So I think that's gonna be a fight. And I think the other one, we mentioned TIF, we specifically added the words project-based TIF, and we could talk about that. I think the league is gonna push for that as well, but I think that's something that could actually benefit us even more than what we fought for last year. And otherwise, I think, I don't think I done miss anything new. Well, I don't know what new, but I do think people should know that we have, one of our very highest priorities is state funding for housing, you know, like housing for years has been one of the highest priorities in the council, and we certainly know that it's a serious need in Montpelier, and we have some opportunities. So getting, getting money from the state government to address that is gonna be helpful. The things about public safety, very important. I think the message we sent with the big ordinance debate earlier in the year was that it was not the end of the discussion, it was the beginning of the discussion, and that's why the human trafficking is such a big, big deal. I think, I think this looks good. Just note that we're apropos of the, the comments we heard earlier, we are wanting to take another run at public restroom funding. We did not get a warm reception, at least from the administration level last year, but.
But the legislature, I think, they, they were already more open to it. It was just again a timing issue, so.
Try to work on that too.
Yeah, actually, before you go to Lauren, is there anything else? I want to make sure that we didn't interrupt your train of thought.
I mean, I think I've said everything that I wanted to say.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Yes, for sure. Okay, go ahead, Lauren.
Yeah, I mean, this is just still on the line of the federal money getting to communities. And I think there's gonna be, for example, like the Municipal Energy Resilience Initiative, where there was an issue around ARPA eligibility. I believe they found building EGS, whatever that's, building grounds and services, administration money, but kind of underscoring the importance of some of those programs that are gonna fund important initiatives in communities like Montpelier that they, if they need to like move money around because of eligibility issues with the federal strings, that they're still, you know, emphasizing the importance of programs like that and looking, you know, and if we can be helpful, it's like the kinds of important work that can be done with that funding. So I think there could be a number of programs like that, that as they learn more about federal eligibility, there could be some ongoing lobbying to make sure they can continue to try to fund those programs.
You know, transportation's a big point to hit too, especially as we look at the use for the, the former Alex Club property. You know, there, it is some distance from town, and right now, I think GMP is struggling recruiting drivers to the point where our own microtransit is, you know, the delay times are longer than we would hope for at this point. But we don't want that to be a chilling effect for people who have done a public transportation to get up to that property to use it for recreational opportunities or anything else there. So beefing up the funding on that would be huge.
I think, I guess, one, one more thing I would add, just generally regarding the funding, and it sort of relates to what, what everyone said here is, I think from an advocacy standpoint, the ability for the city to show that you can get the money to work quickly is gonna be very compelling. I think as we get three years into these influxes of various levels of federal funding coming in, and particularly when thinking about eligibility challenges and concern, because often it's just this, you know, the unknown that kind of prevents them from wanting to do something. I think that there's gonna be a lot of incentive and sort of, yeah, I, I think the legislature and the administration are gonna wanna be looking for ways that this money can get to work quickly, because frankly, I think that's been a bit of a challenge so far. So as we sort of think about the advocacy, thinking about that is important.
Yeah, I'd like to weigh in on that, and, and I mean, I think you're right. And I think that's an opportunity for some dialogue with local governments and with people involved in these things because maybe the state should take a look at what it takes to be able to do these projects quickly. You know, I think there's this emphasis to do it, and then when you can't get approvals turned around for engineering designs and those kinds of things, and the permits that you need to go forward, even at a local level, you know, where we, we were almost a year waiting for a design approval on our East State Street. We had to delay that whole project this year because we just waiting on a state approval. And I think it's staffing, I don't think it's there, but, so I think there needs to be some sense that, number one, there's a lot of investment in design and prep that people may not be willing to make unless they're certain they're gonna get the funding. You know, you gotta lay out a couple hundred thousand dollars to hopefully get this grant. So I just urge that there be some understanding that not everyone's gonna be getting money and say, okay, I'm gonna dig up the ground and put in water lines or, you know, internet or whatever, build a homeless housing tomorrow now that I've got it. Because we all then have to do what it takes to complete those projects, including public processes and all. So I, I think, yes, that's true that they're gonna want to, and to the extent that we can collectively articulate the challenges with being ready to move fast.
Absolutely.
Because, right, it's easy to say, well, we can't give them the money, they aren't ready to do it. Well, what does it take to be ready to do it?
I want to check with folks online, Carrie and Jennifer, anything you wanna weigh in on this? Not that's okay. Okay, and Peter Kelman, I see your hand is up. Go ahead, Peter.
Thank you. I, I want to make an observation, something like what Bill is just talking about. It's not just money. Sure, it's about money, but it's also about how the money is allocated. And one of the problems that we have is we have a Republican governor and a Republican, very fiscally tightly controlled. And so the legislature needs to write these bills in ways that the, that the, that the administration can't hold on to that money and do with it what it wants to do and where it wants to do it. There's a huge imbalance of where the money is spent, there's a huge imbalance, I mean, just in human services alone. It's very difficult for our agencies to get the money when the money is, is sent more often to Chittenden, where they've got shovel-ready projects. A, a city like Burlington has the capacity to develop those shovel-ready projects, so they get them. So it's, it does tie into bills. So the work, I think, if you guys lobbyists can help the legislature write some of their bills in ways that really don't permit the administration to sit on the money and, and so forth. The, the second thing, which is related to that, is that it, it is a question, it's a little bit what happened to the Heat Standard. Who is going to make the decisions about implementation? Is it going to be an estate agency? Is it going to be an estate agency or is it going to be a, you know, I mean, the legislature wanted the P U C to make, make the decision. And you know, that's what, why Scott vetoed it, because he wants to make the decision. All right. So, or, or he said, make the legislature tell us who should make the decision. Don't throw it to the P U C. So it's not just about money. Uh, it's really about how the bills are written and giving the legislature more power to get the money to distributed much more, uh, robust, uh, much more fairly and equitably than it has been. I, I'd be curious to get some reaction to that from the, from the Leonine people. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think just generally makeup, um, the makeup being what it is now, a hundred and four, uh, a super majority in the house. You know, a hundred and nine, if you count the progressives. So I think going forward, it's going to be interesting to see how the administration reacts to that, if they're still vetoing everything. Or if we're going to see a little bit more, uh, we're going to see the legislature maybe pushing things through that they wouldn't be able to normally. Do you have anything to say generally though, to the funding piece?
No, I, I mean, I think you hit the nail on the head. I think that's the sort of shift in dynamic we're all interested to see, given what happened in the election and how that plays out and, and, you know, and, and how the legislation is crafted and the, the money is appropriated. I, I, I would expect that that sort of shift in the balance of power will, will probably lead the Democrats who controls things to be more ambitious, maybe with their, with where they're putting the money.
Super. I'm also very interested to see the answer to that. Well, this is great. I, the, all of these things are, um, uh, ideas, ethic points that I feel good about and I could get behind. And, um, I'm looking forward to working more on them. So, um, any, uh, any further comments about any of this? Checking online. Okay. Um, so I think we need a motion. Is anybody up for making a motion? Yes, go ahead.
Move to approve the twenty twenty-three legislative agenda.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any, uh, further discussion, Jack?
So to clarify, you're making a motion to tell yourself what to do.
And I want you to leave some fun of him. Say, remember you moved the approval of this. Being a copy every day.
That's right. I don't like.
That's good. Uh, okay, um, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and opposed? Okay, so that is unanimous passes. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah.
For sure. To work with you all again.
Yeah. Okay. So I think we are ready to.
Get back to the offices.
Uh, okay, so we are up to the energy update. At that, we have Chris Lumra, welcome. Hello.
So I think I know most of you to one degree or another from different contexts, but thank you for having me today. As you, as you're all aware, I have been hired to be the, uh, sustainability and facilities coordinator for the city. Also been appointed the ADA coordinator, all these, all these pieces kind of work pretty nicely together. So, um, I'm excited. It's been a very steep learning curve and a really a lot going on the last couple of months, really. But I'm digging my teeth in and getting going here. So, um, start here, um, start with E Vs. Um, we have identified what we think is the most likely candidate for the city's, to these first E V in our fleet. And that would be the, uh, engineering car that the public works department uses. Um, this, this vehicle historically uses about four hundred and fifty gallons of gas a year, which puts it on, on pretty close power with the, the light duty pickup trucks that public works uses for, for daily operations. So, um, it, it's a good fit in that way. And so that, uh, that vehicle is slated to be replaced in F Y twenty-four. And the anticipation is that it goes out to bid as, as an E V, uh, once the budget's approved in March. And hopefully to take delivery beginning of the fiscal year. And to support this vehicle or to support electrification, right? We need chargers. Everybody's aware of that. And my, my initial understanding was that we, we really wanted to get a D C fast charger at the public works facility for, to support operations. I think we're, we're a little bit out ahead of ourselves. I've, I've kind of gotten some expert opinions that, that support this. And it's very expensive. Some of you I think are aware, but, uh, in order to have D C fast charging at public works, there's about fifty thousand dollars worth of primary power infrastructure work that has to be done in preparation to that. So that, um, the charger itself is about fifty thousand dollars installed. There's about fifty thousand dollars in additional work that needs to be done before that. And I think right now the thinking is that we're going to try and try and queue up the infrastructure work so that we will be able to be more nimble when, when the time comes to get this charger in place. To support the, um, engineer's car, the best, the best, um, option sounds like it's going to be level two chargers at City, City Hall. Much less expensive, easier to install, faster, that type of thing. Uh, to, to be perfectly candid, I've been working very hard on the level, level three charger at the public works garage. And really, all of this information is emergent to me in the, in just literally days. So I have not really had time to do a lot of research into the, the level two charge installation here. However, in, um, and I forgot to mention this at MEAC last night, but in my discussions with Green Mountain Power about the, the needs of the level three chargers, um, their transportation, E V, E V, E V transportation specialist, Zach Casey, let me know that they are very interested in they, Green Mountain Power in installing level three chargers in downtown Montpelier. And I said, please, 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 let's, let's have one at City Hall, you know? So they're going to look at, look at infrastructure. This would be a public charger. And I think this would be a great location for it and, and supports our mission. Uh, sends, sends a really great message. And, you know, kind of bonus, it brings people to town for an hour to go over to Three Penny and have a burger, whatever. Now, so kind of I, I have not heard back from him, but he sounded excited and very willing to, to investigate that. So that's, that's kind of E Vs and chargers. District heat. We are definitely interested in increasing usership of district heat. There are, as you all know, there are cost, cost challenges, obstacles, that type of thing. But, um, there is, there is a possibility to leverage some, some money from, uh, Bill, Bill's much more aware of the money as I, than I am. And, uh, but there, there is some carrots, there are some carrots. And we do have one, uh, very promising group of owners that have between five and seven buildings, depending how far we, we extend our main lines that are, they're quite interested in talking about this. They have kind of initially asked for a, a little bit of support from us, helping with the connections and of course, the line extensions and that type of thing to kind of soften the initial costs. And, and we're looking into that, but it's so far, initial, initial discussions are promising for increasing usage of district heat. So the kind of sustainable facilities piece, I think, so, so my office has moved from City Hall to the public works garage. And frankly, before having an office down there, I had been to that facility maybe once or twice, right? And I'm much more familiar with it. And I kind of would just like to share information about the campus with you to, to help you understand better what we're thinking down there. And when I say campus, it's, it's really, it's the streets and water department. It's not the treatment plant that I'm, I'm including in the campus. And at that, at that facility, there's, there's two large buildings. Um, and I think kind of interchangeably, they get referred to as the public works garage. Um, the, the people who use them daily call one building, the garage, which houses a handful of offices, five, four, five, six offices there. And it's the repair shop for all the equipment. And it's also, um, staging area and storage for water, water sewer parts and pieces and that type of thing. Workshop for those guys as well. That building is, as I said, primarily offices and repair space and break room for, for rank and file workers. And the other building down there is, um, known as the equipment bar. And that is where all our trucks and snowplows and snow blowers live when they are not out working. The, um, all of, all of that campus is currently heated with fuel oil. There's a, there's a hot water boiler that heats the garage office building. And that uses about twenty-five hundred gallons of fuel a year. There's a backup generator there that consumes somewhere around five hundred gallons of diesel fuel a year. And it's exercises and, and periodic testing and that type of thing. And the big user down at that facility is the equipment bar. So that uses four thousand gallons of fuel a year. And it's a huge open metal building with overhead doors on both ends that are opened repeatedly throughout the day. So as, as I was familiarizing myself with the campus, I, I went into this building, I looked around. Holy cow, these doors, how, how, how do we ever heat this thing? And it turns out, as I really kind of got walked through, walked through procedures down there. The real, the real heating issue with that building is, lies, lies in its mission. And it, it is tasked with thawing out literally fifty tons of frozen steel every night in the winter time. Right? All, all our trucks come in there and they're zero degrees. And it's, it's a huge thermal mass that transient through that building. Current heating system in that building is an absolute dinosaur of a wall mounted hot air furnace that blows, blows hot air way, way up high into this cavernous building. And it has, it has multiple failures. It's really old. It's, it's literally, there are pieces of it held together with electrical tape right now. Obsolete parts that it needs for repair that just aren't available. And it's well beyond its service life. As that building stands, it does not lend itself well to to heating with hot water. The heat that will be generated from the, from the wastewater treatment upgrades will be coming in the form of hot water. So after really kind of working with the stakeholders and wrapping my heads around, my head around this, I, I really recommend the best solution for that, that building. Uh, and the concrete slab on the floor is failing. It's good reinforcing steel coming through it from salt exposure. It's got a failed trench drain in it where all, all the melted snow goes that needs, need repairs as well. So at this point, my recommendation is that take the slab out of there, put in a new insulated slab with, with heating tubing in it for radiant heat. And it's this thing with the addition of a heat exchanger and, and a few pumps is a hundred percent ready to accept waste heat, a huge amount of waste heat from the treatment plant as soon as that's available. Right now, we are, um, and when I say right now, as you all know, we're, we're working through budget and everybody is really, really busy. But, um, we're, we're trying to get legal review of the bond wording. And would, my preference, my recommendation right now is that if legal says that it's okay, I would divert the, the, a portion at least of the quarter million dollar bond, which was originally written to put a pellet boiler down there toward this slab, slab removal and replacement in the public works garage. They, they, as I've already kind of detailed, it cures a bunch of, a bunch of failures and, and maintenance problems with that building. And it's for the mission of that building of thawing out trucks. Having the heat down here is, it's just, it's ideal. It's, uh, and I've, I've gotten really, really rousing support from, from experts and, and stakeholders all around this project. Nobody, nobody thinks it's anything but exactly what we should do. We, we being Kurt Modica and myself had a meeting with, um, Efficiency Vermont last Thursday at the barn to discuss this project. Efficiency Vermont loves the project. The real question with this is, is how much heat are we going to get from, from the treatment plant upgrades? And I kind of cornered Kurt today and, um, made him cry uncle. He, he, he said that probably six months from now, we'll have a really, a, a pretty good idea how much heat we'll have to work with. And Efficiency Vermont has, has said that they'll be able to help with the engineering costs to, to make that determination. So phase one of the engineering for that whole project rollout will kind of yield this number. Okay? So that's, uh, I'm, I'm really excited about this. I think, I think this is going to be, it's going to be a good fit and it's, it's going to serve the city well. And I hope that everything aligns to really, really make this happen. So on to the garage office building there. Both in, both in our net zero plan and our, uh, twenty eleven, twenty thirteen capital needs assessment. The windows in that building are called out there. They are just terrible. They're, they're also failing. There's glass that's not quite falling out, but it's, you know, the glazing, glazing's missing. There's cracks in all the wood framing, the, you know, the, I'm sure they need to be air sealed around the windows. Well, going in an air ceiling with a bunch of spray foam and windows that need to be replaced anyhow is kind of working against yourself, right? But, um, so windows, window replacement there is, is a project that we're working on. And funding, I, I really haven't wrapped my head quite around that. It may be that there's enough, enough money left in the bond. If it's, if the wording can be interpreted broadly enough to, to include energy efficiency upgrades. Windows aren't terribly expensive. It's, it's on the order of twenty-five thousand dollars installed for the, I think twenty-six windows total down there, something like that. There's also a fair amount of air ceiling. It's just kind of going to be tedious work that, honestly, it may just be Chris with a can of spray foam going around. It, it, that may be the most efficient way to get this done. But it's, it's not something that I've had time to investigate in detail. I know, I kind of know where it needs to happen, but I haven't lifted ceiling tiles and kind of inspected stuff, put my own eyes on it, but, uh, certainly something we can do. Also, that building would love cold climate heat pumps for, for the office spaces. So this, it's, as I've described, it's kind of a dual function building. There's shop areas, there's storage areas. There, there's some large areas of that building that don't need to be heated to, to ambient temperature, right? So we can hopefully set back some thermostats, put cold climate heat pumps in the offices. The offices are all small. It would be fairly small units. And hopefully get us a, a decent reduction on our fossil fuel usage just, just by doing that, right? And I know we don't really get a hundred percent net zero credit for this. But the, the cold climate heat pumps would be much more efficient than the, the half dozen window unit air conditioners that we have there that are just rattling away in plywood panels where there used to be glass type thing. But the, the installer ensured me that, that the cold climate heat pumps and cooling motor literally ten times as efficient as these, these stupid little window unit. So kind of a double benefit there. And also that the, um, public works garage building does have hydronic heat. It's baseboards, baseboard heat in the offices and, and ceiling mounted hot water unit heaters in, in the bigger spaces. All of that and depending how much heat we get from, from the treatment plant, it's a matter of extending insulated underground pipes over and putting in a heat exchanger in the boiler room there and picking up that heat load as well. All of it, hopefully. It's, it's, there's really nobody has a good guess how much heat we're going to get from there. But if, if the stars align and we get a bunch of heat, then it, it really could quite easily heat that, heat that entire campus. And that's, that's kind of what we're working towards. So there's kind of facility, facilities upgrades or sustainability facilities upgrades, just facilities, repair, maintenance, that type of stuff. I've been working on that as well and have, like I said, spent some time with the, the capital needs assessment, which was first written in twenty eleven and updated in twenty thirteen. And there's, there's a lot of big projects on there that haven't been touched and that everything that was wrong then is worse now, right? So we're, we're, we've kind of worked together and highlighted the, the biggest issues on there, the biggest kind of needs and are internally prioritizing these and really, we want to get these on the table and, and say, you know, listen, this, this is what we're up against and how can we, how can we pay for this stuff, right? It's so put a fair amount of work into that and Kelly's been very helpful and we, we hope to make good progress on that. Also with my facilities hat on, you see the light, the light's not flickering. We took care of that. So I, I've actually had kind of
Clear priorities.
And LED bulbs as well. So we, we got an upgrade in the process. So Bertus, our, our custodian and facilities guy has been sick for more than a week now. He's, he said, he's got fairly he's having troubles with a respiratory thing, infection, that type of thing. So I've kind of been filling in for him. And that's, I guess that, that's part of this job, right? It's other duties is assigned bill, right? So shoveling steps this morning and kind of making sure the bathrooms aren't absolutely disgusting and calling in backup when needed, that type of thing. It's a lot. It, it is a lot. This, this job is, but we're, we're we're working at it. I've also been up to the Country Club Road property a few times and, and made sure that the heat got turned on up there. The heat, heat got turned off and transferred between the private owner and the city and got the heat on, got that building kind of stabilized. We're not going to have any catastrophes up there with cold weather coming. And lastly, kind of starting to begin to review just City Hall mostly operations and maintenance procedures here and trying to just make this place a little nicer and, and make it work better. And then as the, as the ADA coordinator, my, my biggest priority immediately is going to be addressing the elevator here and getting the, we've got nagging control issues that were identified in the transition plan also in the, also, there's a fair amount of stuff in here that's overlapping between CNA and, and net zero or CNA and ADA. So we're going to, I, I'm sure we're going to have to go back out to bid with that. There's there's a currently misplaced file that has the historical information on that that I haven't had time to really search for, but there's we take that and get to work on that as well. And that kind of has us up to the minute. I'd welcome any questions if anybody.
Well, first of all, thank you. Oh, my gosh, that was a lot. There's so appreciate that you are already like so deep into this. That's great. And I have a couple of questions, but maybe other folks have questions. Okay. I'm just going to go through it in the order that you talked about it. So with EVs, awesome. Thank you for doing all that research about the infrastructure work that needs to happen. Do you have a sense of, I, I think it makes sense, right? To do the, the infrastructure work now ahead of the, a fast charger for the garage. Do you have a sense of what the timeframe on that might be? If not, that's okay.
I don't.
Okay, that's
I don't.
But even just like identifying like this is what we need to do first. It's like, okay, that's, that's helpful. Yeah. And you know, thinking about like level two chargers here, you know, because they're, because we have the one right here, but that's obviously it's for the public. Are you thinking of, like, if we had one for municipal like, like for this engineering vehicle? Would, do you anticipate that that would also be publicly accessible? Or is that just going to be like, this is just dedicated to?
I would, I would like for it to be publicly accessible as long as we're able to kind of restrict access to it when we need it, you know?
Yeah.
And maybe it's as simple as a sign saying, you know, this, this vehicle is reserved for, like, basically, I believe the public works vehicle is going to charge overnight here. So no overnight parking in this spot. This vehicle's reserved for
Okay, so that I was just trying to think like, how would, how could you, you know, match that? But I guess charging overnight would, would do it. That, that makes sense. Okay. Thank you for all that clarity around the two buildings on the garage campus, basically.
It's confusing, right?
Yeah. Well, and like I, one of the tours that I did a long, a long time ago now, we went to the, the Equipment Barn. And so I was, you know, as you were describing it, I was like, yeah, right. It is a big, open
And certainly to, to kind of piggyback on this, if, if any or all of you ever wanted to schedule a tour to go down there and look at the places, I'd, I'd love to walk you through it. Be, I think it'd be informative for everyone.
So the one concern I have about that, I mean, first of all, I love the idea of radiant floor heating for that space. I, I think now, as you were describing it, right? Like, so you have a a mounted blower basically filling up the upper half with hot air, you know, like that doesn't make much sense. So, but of course, like these trucks are coming in with salt and grease and, you know, all, you know, whatnot. And so that's, that's really hard on the any material that's on the ground. Do we know if there are any other places, any other municipalities that have a radiant floor storing space?
I, I haven't asked, haven't asked that question.
Okay. That would be interesting. I mean, because of course, like if we're, if you're going to do radiant floor heating, it's kind of like, I mean, my, I, I'm a layperson basically, right? So I don't really know these. I'm just asking questions. So I, you know, I'm not an expert. But my understanding anyway is that sort of like, once you do radiant floor heating, it's really hard to change that, right? Like it's, because it's, if it's sort of like embedded, then if it needed to be resurfaced or you know, if it's, if there's corrosion happening, right? Because of the salt, because of all the, you know, fun chemicals that end up on it, right? I guess I would just want to make sure that we do it in a way that hopefully can be like the surface can be can be redone without damaging or needing to dig up the radiant floor heating. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I can definitely speak to your concerns.
Oh, okay.
So the slab that's in there is almost forty years old. The real
Did you say four or?
Forty.
Forty, four zero. Okay.
Forty, yeah. And it just really looking at the slab and how it's failing. It, they, they just didn't get the rebar deep enough in it. The, the reinforcing steel is in places within a half inch of the surface. So, so quality control when this thing is, is put in place to make sure that we get proper coverage of the rebar is really going to, really going to protect it. So the, the the reinforcing steel is so close to the surface, small cracks, let water get in there, water, salted water get in there. So steel starts rusting, expanding, flaking, and then it pops. The concrete exposes more rebar. It's kind of a cycle. So quality control, when we build the slab, number, number one, we could easily expect a forty year life out of it. Which this, this slab put in without the benefit of, of stringent quality control has lasted forty years. And so that's, I, I think that's going to be our friend on the way in. There are also just myriad sealers. We, we need to find the right sealer to protect the surface of this concrete. And, you know, set it, set up a schedule and reapply this stuff and, and take, take, you know, take proactive steps to protect this thing, which that hasn't happened in the life of the existing slab either. And so just to talk, talk to about the melting water and salt. I said, there is a trench drain in there. The trench drain still functions, but it clogs easily. It doesn't, it doesn't work quite as well as it doesn't, it doesn't work well. It needs, needs a lot of help. Grates are rusted, that type of thing. But I wanted to be real clear that that trench drain is connected to an oil water separator, number one. And obviously it's oil and all kinds of crap coming off there. And then the, the water that comes from the separated oil is, does go into sanitary sewer and gets treated as sewage. It's not. So we're, we are already handling that properly and would continue to do so.
Great. Thank you. I think so. And the other, other question I have is with the office building down there. So are you, are you thinking about doing both cold climate heat pumps and hoping to get heat from the water resource recovery facility?
Yes.
Okay.
But I guess we'd, we'd still have the, the cooling problem down there, right? We'd still be, we'd still be married to window units if we didn't do cold climate heat pumps and and again, I, I know that's that's not a lot, not a lot of fossil fuel usage that, that's saved by that, but, you know, operational. We could certainly look at, try, try and get a number. It's going to be kind of tricky to pull that out and there's going to be a little bit of estimation in the process, but, you know, how much money is this going to save us just in cooling, cooling load? And what's the payback?
Right.
And if if our initial estimates from, from the treatment plant say, you know what, you're going to have, you're going to have more heat than you know what to do with, then maybe we pivot and we take, take another look at this and say, okay, this maybe this isn't, maybe this isn't the best use of our resources, right?
Well, I almost wonder like, if you do the cold climate heat pumps, then why connect to the water resource recovery facility?
Well, there's still there's still going to be a a load on that boiler, right? It, it does, it does heat all the workshop area. Well, it heats some of the workshop areas in there to say sixty degrees instead of sixty five or sixty eight or whatever. And then storage rooms are probably heated to a lower, lower temperature than that.
All right. Fair enough. Thank you.
I think the idea was to put heat pumps where the people are working and then the rest of the building
Could be
Could be with the
Water Resource Recovery Facility. Right. Yes. Cool. Thank you. This is very helpful. Other questions? Jack and then Lauren?
Thanks, Chris. I, I couldn't put my finger on it, but it seems to me that we had a report or an analysis from the Energy Advisory Committee about where the potential excessive use of energy is and where the potential savings are. And am I right in thinking that the the Public Works Campus was the, the highest priority for, for doing that?
Yes.
Yep. Good. Obviously there are some savings opportunities here in this building and also some human comfort opportunities that you're also looking at. With regard to the to the charger, if we're talking about putting a hundred thousand dollars into a charger that's going to charge one vehicle, obviously that's not a particularly efficient use of the money. So do we have a we have like a bigger list of what vehicles we would be moving to convert to electric in future years?
Yes, yes. So all of, and, and I'm focused mostly on Public Works fleet right now. These are, these are our real fuel users. The police department currently has two hybrid vehicles. They're not, they're not plugins. They are hybrid cruisers. And the idea, and I've got to understand this a little more. There's so much, so much technical information to, to digest, but basically, police cars are built and tested to their, their very own standards. They, they have to do X, Y, and Z and crash testing and, and all of, all of these really stringent requirements where and this is very new information to me. I've never, never been in a position to, to even consider it, but it's not just put a blue light on the roof of a Tesla and you have a police car. It's, it's so there's just, right now, there aren't suitable, suitable police vehicles other than these, these hybrids. Unfortunately, because those are the, those are the ones that really log the miles, right? But there is, there is a replacement schedule. Back to your original question, there's a replacement schedule for all Public Works vehicles. And they're typically on a six to 10 year cycle, depending on the piece of equipment. And the plan is as, as each, as each vehicle ages out and is ready for trade in, we put it out to bid as an EV and hopefully find suitable candidates. So I, I will qualify this and say that, you know, perfectly suitable candidates for a lot of these vehicles do not exist, right? There's, there's heavy trucks, that type of thing. So the 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 level three charger, the DC fast charger interchangeable terms. I think the idea is that that's available, that, that's going to charge a fairly large battery pack in an hour. Hopefully, when the future comes that we have electric dump trucks and snowplows and that type of thing. With just a little bit of schedule coordination, those things can come in, plug in for an hour, driver takes a break or takes a different piece of equipment. This thing charges, it goes back out, the next you know, truck thirty seven comes in, plugs in, charges. So one fast charger in the course of, you know, winter operations could be almost continually charging vehicle after vehicle after vehicle. With, you know, and that's some operational stuff that, that we haven't even begun to discuss, but it, it seems fairly elementary and simple to
And I think our, to, just to amplify that, to, you know, to, to that point is, and Chris and I have talked about this a fair amount, which is we're so far away from really being able to convert the fleet there. You know, when we look at that schedule and, and, you know, the thinking was, well, then yes, we need to invest a hundred thousand, but is it smart to build, put that charger in now and have it sit unused for four or five years when we could get one out here that would only be charging the one, the one vehicle for now, but if we were able to get others, but also the public vehicles were, were furthering greater goals and not you, you know, kind of more of a just in time when we watch the fleet, because eventually they're, they're going to be there, but they're not there yet. And you know, obviously then we've got fire trucks and, you know, it may just be that we'll have a fleet of police hybrids for a while before they go fully electric. And that's, that's an improvement. It's not perfect, but it's an improvement.
I don't know if you, I don't know how much time you spend watching city council meetings before you got this job, but people will, will tell you that pretty much every time we're asked to approve the purchase of another vehicle, I or someone else on the council is going to say, so did you look for an electric vehicle for that?
And to just to follow up on vehicles, just in just a little bit more detail. I, I did have a conversation with Kurt today. I, I didn't get a chance to talk to Zach, who's the more, more direct person for this, but I, I've begun to question our, our existing model of vehicle procurement. It seems like we we send out a specification. We say, okay, we need a truck that can do X, Y, and Z. It needs to tow a six thousand pound trailer and it needs to be able to haul X number of pounds of payload and it needs four wheel drive, plowing, but whatever, whatever the truck needs, we write a specification to that. And it goes out to a number of dealers and we ask for bits. And there, there's, there are state fleet discounts that get And it goes out to a number of dealers and we ask for bits. Um, and there, there's uh, there are state fleet discounts that get passed down to the cities that we, we were able to take advantage of. And, um, it sounds like the, the last time a vehicle went out to bid, which I, I guess was probably last spring, they, they, the specification said preference given or, or we, we, we want this to be an EV. And nobody came, none, none of the usual suspects came back to bid on the EV, right? Uh, I'm, I kind of questioned how, how motivated these, these dealers we're working with are to, to meet the EV specification. And I, I asked Kurt, you know, is it time to really take a look at, I, I know this is how we've done it for fifty years or however long, but this is, this is a new landscape and let's take a closer look at how we, how we source these vehicles and maybe we can, we can set something up that's going to be more successful than they, they letting them say or, or giving them an, an opportunity to say, no, we don't have that. Here's a gas truck. It's the best we can do, right? Um, so I, it's, and it's just, this is just a brand new idea that's kind of rattled around between my ears for a few hours. So and, but I, I want to kind of flesh this out and talk to, talk to stakeholders and see, see what kind of sense we can make of that process as well.
That's great. Cool. I, I also think the idea, the, the heated floor idea seems like a great idea, whether it's going to be epoxy coated or something on the uh, on top of it, but seems like a good way to go. I assume that would be uh a lot better for the guys working on the trucks too.
Yeah, that, for the most part, that's not where the repair work happens.
Oh, okay.
Sometimes in, in situations, they, stuff does get worked on there, but for the most part, the equipment barn is just a storage facility and the repair shop is on the back of the, the offices and garage building.
It's been a while since I had a tour, right? Should, we should do it again.
There's, there's a lot to take in there.
Yeah.
There's a lot.
Thanks.
Sure.
Oh, I should say one other thing. Uh, I think it's, it's great that, that, that part of your job is also the ADA coordinator. We were on the ADA committee for several years together and it's great to see us making progress.
Yeah.
You know, I, I give Tom McCardle a lot of credit for, because he was very committed to that for many years and
Yeah, for sure. Not to, not to knock our, our existing DPW team, I think. I think we've got great people. I, I'm so happy with, with the appointment of Kurt and Zach to the positions they're in, but Tom, Tom McCardle was, he was a special breed.
Thanks.
All right, Lauren. Thank you. Yeah, I just had a few questions and first, I'm so excited to have you, so excited to have this role and it's so great to see so much progress so quickly. And I know it's a lot to learn and your enthusiasm and creativity and uh willingness to do whatever it takes is really appreciated. So really excited to continue working with you. Um. One question for the, um, so if we need to spend like fifty thousand dollars to do the line extension to have the phase three power for like, could level two chargers serve the purpose or do we really need that constant? Like, is this something where overnight vehicles could be or like four hour stretches or whatever? Like, is there, is there feasibility because they're so much cheaper that it could meet the need or is that not a possibility, given the demand on the vehicles at crunch time?
If, if we were at the point, and this is years down the road, if we were at the point where we had an all-electric all-electric street fleet and we were in the middle of a real, a real snowstorm when it's all hands on deck, all machinery working, snow removal, all of that stuff. Look, uh, a ten level two chargers wouldn't be enough. We, we, it would definitely hamper our operations.
And that, yeah, not to interrupt, but I just want to weigh in because at least for now, and this is something we might look at in the future, but that the gasoline site there, the, the is also serves all our other vehicles. So police and that kind of thing. So, you know, having a police cruiser that's doing its shift to get down there and have to sit for four hours. I mean, I suppose they could put in what it's, you know, but if, if in the middle of the night, someone needs a chart, you know, I think it's uh, you know, whereas maybe they would use the one here. Uh, so I think we need to think strategically. There may be multiple locations for these and not just one.
I guess that was my next question is, is, I mean, I love the idea of the downtown level three that the city could use um as we build out the electric fleet and that the public could use. I mean, I think having a location that seems great, definitely move forward with that. I mean, I guess, I mean, obviously you want it to be as convenient as possible, but I don't know if there's any other sites where we already have phase three power or something where we don't have to pay for the line upgrade. I'm sure that will be. Can think about that, but you know, maybe there's a location where we're not spending the fifty thousand, but
Yeah.
I mean, if not, I do think, you know, obviously getting ourselves ready for, I mean, we're just in the midst right now. Like the state is signing on to California, the zero Michigan, zero emission vehicles and um zero emission trucks for heavy fleets um by twenty thirty-five manufacturers are going to only be able to sell. So I think this transition is going to be coming quicker than we think as the manufacturers are totally retooling to electric. So um, I think being ready makes total sense and you know, just that's, that's what we should be doing and it's where everything's headed. So I think, you know, whatever, whatever we can do in that, but I guess, you know, if there's a way to save the fifty, we would love it.
Well, it also may be, you know, I mean, I think if you look the other way though, you know, if once the three phase power is there, it's there. And, and you know, it could be in the future, we're going to need more than one charger there.
Yeah.
So, you know, then we have the capacity to have a bank of them as, as needed, you know, to expand as the fleet expands. So it's a kind of a one-time investment to be able to have a sustainable program. So I don't, I don't know that it's a bad idea.
Yeah.
One, uh, I, and so one, one other thing I'd add that I have learned about EV chargers specific to the public works facility campus down there. Um. It's, it's not even unlikely that during some of these snow events, we'll lose power. Uh, and unfortunately our backup generator that, that powers the public works campus right now is nowhere near nowhere near robust enough to, to feed a level, level three charger. Uh, so under those circumstances, obviously it's, it's emergency, emergency planning at that point. It's, it's a not a common event, but it's not an unlikely event. Um, the generator will run level two chargers. So it, I, I think we definitely need a, a blend of them down there. And we may find ourselves in a situation where, you know what, level two charging, it's what we have until, until the grid comes back, you know? Where, oh, I mean, as much as people like to mock the idea of charging electric cars with, with fuel power generators, it's it's, this isn't an optional thing. If this is a necessity and it's what we do and, and worst case, it makes, makes our EVs temporarily the equivalent of the diesel that they replaced, but only, only very temporarily.
Great. And just one other, um. More on the bond and the heating. I mean, I really hope that we, we get the, the advice that we can move forward with the proposal as you've laid out. And it does uh, make me think we were talking a little bit at the Energy Advisory Committee last night, like these types of projects and knowing that as like the research and technology, if they can be, maybe we need to think about writing them with like the goal in mind and some more flexibility and, you know, naming a specific technology. I mean, I like the direction and like that we're trying to implement our net zero plan and stuff, but like if we're finding that there's actually a better option that still meets the goal at the location that we want to do it, maybe um, just a, a flag for bonding wording to make sure that if we get it, you know, maybe it will be great and fine. And that's what I'm hoping. Um, but maybe we could keep that in mind.
Well, I wonder if, uh, sorry, I don't want to interrupt you. Um, I'm just speculating here. If the advice is not that, you know, it said this and this is what we have to keep to, I wonder if we put something on the ballot that says to your public, would you give us permission to?
You can vote to repurpose or reword the purpose of.
Okay.
That's possible. So actually it could be timely because we could, we could add that, you know?
Yeah.
This much.
Yeah, I, and depending on the timing of when we get this advice, it might be good to start thinking about that now anyway. Um. Cool. Anything else? Okay.
I, I, I'd like to just piggyback on what, what Lauren just said and, and say, you know, future planning, let's, uh, you know, I'm happy certainly with a little bit of advance notice to maybe not make myself an expert in, in any given subject, but do some, do some research and be able to give thoughtful advice as to, you know, we want to do, we want to achieve this goal and we're, we're going to write a bond for it. And what do you think? And, and you know, kind of pull together the stakeholders and really really be deliberate about the wording of that. As, you know, I'm all new to this, but it's how important is the wording of the bond? It's, it's, it's life or death, right? Or not, not life or death.
We don't know. We'll, we'll see.
Yep. It's, it's important. It matters. And if we can accept to.
If I can speculate a little bit here, I feel like, I mean, maybe this, just because I'm transitioning to this new role at some point and thinking about other municipalities in the area, right? Like and Montpelier is unique in that we have um, a lot more capacity than lots of smaller towns, right? Um, I, this probably happens already, but I'm just anticipating that, you know, there may be a lot of municipalities that don't have the expertise that you are putting together right now. And I'm just, I, I I, I hope, I'm sure that it's, you know, at some point other municipalities are going to be like, you know, we want to pick your brain. Does he like, how do we, you know, if we're, we're redoing our own garage, what do we do? Like, we heard that you put in a radiant floor or like just things like that. How did that go? What was that like?
But I, yeah, I'd, I'd love to help with anything like that.
Um, that's a, a separate thing, but uh, I do have one other question, which is that at one point we had before us a policy to, that would uh, have required that the city transition all of its buildings off of oil by twenty thirty, whether or not the systems like the heating systems that they're on were due for replacement. Um. And I mean, the other part of it is that like as the heating systems come up for replacement, that we've replaced them with something non-fossil fuel based. And we, we sort of hunted on that to collect information, you know, data on um, how much that was going to cost us or um, just to do some more research. Uh, do you have any thoughts on such a policy?
Um. I mean, I, I think that is the, that is the net thirty, net thirty goal. Net zero twenty thirty goal is to be off fossil fuels. Um. I, you know, we're, we're pretty lucky. Fire station, police here, we're on district eight, we're, we're no fossil fuels to eat this building. Uh. The, I mean, a big wild card is our, our rec center on Berry Street. What, what in the world is going to happen to that building? Uh, I I, I mean, I, I have my personal opinions about that. And that, that being that, that building is obsolete. It does not service city well and um the idea of taking out an oil boiler in there and, and spending few hundred thousand dollars to convert it to a pellet boiler to still have an inaccessible dinosaur of a building does not make sense to me, to be honest with you. I um, I envision a future that that building gets deemed obsolete and gets sold off. What, whatever happens to that building, um. I, I think so a building like that, I, I'd push back if you said, Chris, we really want to put a pellet boiler in, in the, you know, in the rec center. Uh, I, I'd really want to be thoughtful about that and, and be sure of the direction we're going. Um.
The, but that is, sorry to interrupt, but that is one of the projects we talked about when you first came on. I know you've had a lot, what was evaluating the heat systems in each building and what it would take to convert and the cost. It was part to that proposed policy. I mean, I think, I do think the rec center is an outlier, but you know, already our senior center has, they've got a pellet boiler already, you know, presumably anything we build at Country Club Road, we would build, you know, more modern, if we can do this huge conversion at the public work garage, we're really down to, you know, the, the stuff at the rec field and we don't have that many more, the water treatment plant.
Right.
It's about it. But, you know, we don't have that much more to go. So, um, I think.
The, I, I think we're.
Although we can't put a number on it, but I think it's, we're, we're on the way. So it's a reasonable policy.
Yeah.
And, and similar to the, to the Berry Street Rec Center, the the country club, complete country club road property is, it's, it's a wild card right now. We need to, we need to see what White and Burke has to say about it. If I mean, it's, we'll, we'll see what they say about that building and, and how well, how well that can or, or can't serve the city. And again, make, try and make an intelligent decision about what we'll do up there.
Yeah. You know, I appreciate uh, your, you know, thinking around like the, the rec building and um. Uh, so I, I guess I wonder if well, and, and also I appreciate your thinking that, that really this policy that we're talking about might effectively be an extension of the net zero policy that we already have adopted. Right? Like, it's almost like a clarification. Um, it's, it's almost implied, right? Um.
You know, that's, that's what I understand my mission as a sustainability's coordinator to be is to
Yeah.
do all we can to uh, get off fossil fuels.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's tempting to like, okay, well then we should just pass it. But that part of me is also like, do we need to? Because it's already maybe we already have passed it. Anyway, it's something I might have some just offline conversations about like whether or not we need to, maybe we don't, but whatever, let's.
So one, one more thing I would share that I, I certainly was not aware of this and it's, it's good news, good news. Um. Still trying to familiarize myself with city facilities. I've spent the, the ten years I worked as building inspector, primarily in City Hall. Um, so I went over the other day and, and spent some time with Patrick Healy and got to know the Green Mountain Cemetery campus and facility and buildings over there. Uh, completely unknown to me. Patrick has, uh, he has switched over as much as possible to these really heavy duty battery powered trimmers and, and that type of thing. I wasn't sure if council was, was aware of that, but I thought that was super cool. So these things are, are like huge backpack battery that plugs into these trimmers and they're not like my stupid battery trimmer at home that cuts for half an hour and you have to go get another battery. These things he's run for four hours on the charge and he's super happy with them. They're, they're powerful. They don't, they don't diminish his operations in any, any way, shape or form. They're quiet. You don't, you're not breathing the two cycle exhaust. He, he really loves them and um. I, I was, I was really pleased to, to see that, you know, Patrick had taken that on himself to to research these things and find, find these tools that, that really worked well for him and inadvertently or intentionally, I guess, helped us, helped us meet this goal. I did ask him the, the sixty-four thousand dollar question bill, how much fuel do these replace? And he said, I have no idea. But it's, it's a lot. And, and I know, I, I think I understand that. I mean, so a gallon of gas creates twenty pounds of carbon, carbon dioxide, right? That's, that's how it is. It doesn't matter if it's in a car with a catalytic converter that's, that's exhaling clean exhaust or it's, it's a gallon of gas that gets mixed with oil and burned through a two-stroke, which is incredibly dirty in so many other ways, but it's like the small, small engines are, you know, air pollution. There, there's a bunch of other stuff that comes with those. So that's to me, it's, it's, it's not going to be a huge fuel savings, but it's, there's, there's other benefits as well, right?
Totally. Um, and this is something that I, I feel like I've been having this conversation with BBW folks for some time, rec, yeah. So, um, anyway, do you think this is something that has the potential that, that we can be switching to um, for, for city operations?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, and
Okay.
Um, and I would, I guess I would ask for a little bit of clarity on that specific issue. It's the the biggest bang for the buck is the, the biggest users, right? What which, which vehicle, which building uses the most number of gallons? But these, I, I'm a little bit hung up on how dirty these small engines are, you know, even, even four cycle lawnmowers are like an hour of that is equivalent to a couple hundred miles of car driving, right? Um, is how big a priority is it to us to, to address air pollution in, in the form of the dirty exhaust from these small engines, right? air pollution i- in the form of the dirty exhaust from these small engines, right? Is it? Or do we just want to really, really kind of focus on the big usage and and try and reduce the the bulk gallon usage, you know?
Um, you go ahead, Lauren.
What's the typical lifespan of that equipment? I mean, like my knee jerk would be whenever we're replacing at this point, we should be replacing. I mean, I think all of these pieces are part of the twenty thirty goal. Um, and yeah, we're focusing attention and resources on like the biggest reducers, but we shouldn't be replacing equipment. I don't know some of the stuff, though, if it lasts for a long time, like, would we have that twenty thirty similar to the buildings where we're trying to have replaced the whole fleet of fossil fuel equipment by then as well, which
Yeah, that that's not clear in the in the net zero plan for sure. And the I would say the lifecycle lives, yeah, the lifespan of these pieces of equipment varies wildly.
But that's something we can look at as we're doing equip for sure, for sure.
Um, and again, the 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 heavier pieces, the big wide mowers that we use for the bulk grass cutting, those those don't exist as as effective electrically powered equipment yet, but I that's got to be in a two or three year time horizon for those.
There exists a schedule of replacement for the this kind of equipment?
Not the same as vehicles do. I think it's
I I think it exists.
But I think, you know, certainly we can look at that and figure out, you know, what's again, it comes down to what's available and what's doesn't meet the need that we're doing. The tremors work great. The mowers, not as much, you know, so I think it's
Yep.
You know, mowing fields, big wide open spaces, you need to be able to how to go and
I would venture the guess and that the the replacement schedule for these exists in the heads of of the people who use them daily.
Yeah, sure.
Um, I'm sure if I had a conversation with with Pat Healy, he would say, yeah, this this zero turnover here is going to be worn out in five years and and I'll need to do.
Yeah.
You know, our needs, our needs guys who are cutting grass for the rec center every day, same thing. They're they're going to have a decent idea. It may not be down to the
I mean, you asked about like how to prioritize that kind of replacement. I mean, in as much as it costs your time. I mean, I like I want to recognize that it's not really my job to tell you this, right? Um, but like if it's you know, things cost more than just money, right? Like, it seems to me that we need to be prioritizing big big, uh, you know, emitters. But if it's not, if it's not a question of time, if it's and it's not a question of money, then I I would love to see us try to do all of the above. Um, the because it's all like Lauren said, you know, it's, it's all a part of meeting the goal. And so especially and and too, you know, one of the reasons to potentially do the building specific policy clarification uh, is even though it's already included in or implied by our policy is that we want to, as the city, I think we want to set a good example for the rest of the community. And I think that includes, you know, with you know, the tremors as well as like to say, you know, we, we have this policy, but here's how specifically it's going to play out. You know, we're going to we're going to get our buildings off of oil by twenty thirty. Um, and just making that clear um, to to the community as well.
Yeah, I mean, you make a good point, right? It's it's at some point, it's it's a matter of optics, you know, we're so I I was at the pool and these guys are running around with these stinky gas tremors the whole time. And my kids had to breathe the exhaust and whatever, whatever the scenario is, it's what are we doing? How how what what examples are we setting? What kind of leadership are we showing?
Okay, right. Yeah. Yeah, those are like little but symbolic things. So uh, cool. Thank you. I as usual, I could talk about this for a long time. And I apologize. Um, any, uh, I just want to check in. Uh, councillor Brown and councillor Morton, anything you would like to weigh in on on this? Okay, just wanted to check. Any other thoughts, council? Thank you so much. This has been really great. Really appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, we're going to go to item eight and a half, which is the discussing anticipated vacancies. So on that, do you want to go first? Do you want me to go first?
I mean, I I guess the agenda item, I think it's probably weren't agenda item for you all that the mayor and myself here, but I just want to be cognizant. We have a pretty busy budget season coming up here. And, uh, you know, I I I at one point had thought like, ah, could I do the legislature and city council, you know, at the same time, but you know, as I'm looking at the meetings I've already got going and the the day job, obviously. Uh, Hunter S. Thompson always said anything worth doing is worth doing right. And I don't think I could do it right, you know? Uh, so I want to be respectful to you all on that one. Uh, but also want to like give some notice that, you know, if if you do need to fill the vacancy, give people enough time to apply and do it for whatever period there. So I would just kick off saying my intention would be for uh, December twenty first to be my last meeting, um, and then transition out there. I could be flexible, just depending on the timing. If you needed me a bit longer or something. Uh, but the session does start January first, which would be our next council meeting. And I I just envision I'd be missing some time if that were the case. So uh, you know, I spoke to Bill today. I I spoke to a few of you just one on one here. Uh, that'd be my hope. Uh, we we have time for goodbyes later, but I I will say it's definitely been one of the the greatest privileges ever, uh, serving with all of you there. And it's it's very important to me not to leave you in the lurch and, uh, you know, do right by you guys too, but that would be my plan at the moment.
Yeah, uh, Lauren?
Yeah.
Um, I don't accept your resignation. But seriously, no, but, um, could you remind us, Bill, the process for
I thought maybe the mayor was going to announce her to go through the whole thing because they're too different. They're actually different for both seats.
Yes, yeah. So, uh, similarly, uh, to Connor, I I'm just anticipating that being a part of the Senate is going to be a lot of time. And I think one of the differences uh, between um, in this situation, being a, you know, rep versus a senator is that I as a senator, I would represent well, uh, just a different boundary, um, of folks. And and, you know, I I think it would be a question, you know, if if I was to stay on, right? That like, well, who was I representing when I said that? Was I representing the people of just Montpelier? Was I representing the folks of of the Washington Senate District? Uh, so anyway, I think it is, it is appropriate for me to step down. And um, so I would also anticipate stepping down December twenty first. Uh, the last meeting before the session starts. So uh, yeah, and I would, I would also say, like, I'm actually having a really hard time thinking about not being here. Like, this has been a part of my life for the last ten years. I'm going to save all of that. I've loved, I have a lot to say about it. But I just want you to know, like, I I'm having a hard time like separating my my thinking from what is happening here. Um, having said that, Bill, what is the process?
So it sounds like we need to get the budget done by December twenty first. So two meetings. We can handle the public hearings without you, but you gotta make all the decisions on the fourteenth and twenty first. Manager's review has to be done by the twenty first. Uh, no. So the the process that, uh, so there are two different processes. Uh, I looked them both up in the charter. I am paraphrasing by memory, but we can certainly go to it. Uh, so we'll start with the mayor. When there's a vacancy in the mayor's seat with more than a hundred and twenty days left in their term. Now, Mayor Watson's term goes all the way till the next March. So there is clearly going to be more than a hundred and twenty days left in her term. It says the city council shall forthwith, shall call forthwith a special election to fill the remainder of the mayor's term. So whenever that election is, when that person gets elected mayor, they are mayor until the end of Mayor's Watson's term. So if you were to call a special election in January or February, that person would be mayor all the way until the following March. Obviously, I think it makes, practically speaking, and for the city clerk's sake, it would be ideal not to have an additional election between now and town meeting, if at all possible. So you know, the the question is, you know, if she's, her for her last meeting is the end of December is, you know, the first Tuesday, second Tuesday, whatever, first Tuesday, March fourth with. And probably it is. Um, that would be, we would have sort of no mayor for January, February, essentially. With the council seat, it's different. It's if there's, um, if there's a vacancy with more than ninety days left. And again, Connor also has a full year afterwards. So those day limits are coming. This is the council shall appoint a person, you know, a fill-in until the next town meeting election. So even if you were to appoint someone, they would only be on, you may remember when Ashley Hill stepped down a couple of years ago, we appointed Dan Richardson. And he was only on for a couple of months. They got reelected to the one year term, but his first fill-in was only for six weeks or something. And so I think, so again, the question would be so I think, so there are two different questions and I, you know, obviously, no matter what uh, council member Casey's one year term is going to be on the March ballot. Question is, so two questions. One, do you want to time it so that the mayor's term is on the March ballot? Or do you want to have a special election? And two, do you want to fill the seat by appointment between now and March once council member Casey steps down or not? And again, there's no time limit, just as the council shall fill by appointment. Doesn't say within so many days or whatever. And I certainly, you know, if we had many months to go, by all means, you'd want to fill it. The question is, do you want to fill it? Just, and it would be a new person coming in right in sort of the budget process. So it's really your decision how you want to do that, but they are different. They're different animals and need to be handled sort of separate.
Jack.
Thanks. I've been, I have a couple of thoughts about this. Uh, one is that the office of vacancies in the office, for one thing, for neither of these act, neither of the actions that the city council takes come into play until there's a vacancy. So as long as the the two of you are still on the council and serving as mayor, there's no vacancy yet. Um, with regard to the vacancy in the office of mayor, it does say the city council shall forthwith direct the city clerk to call a special meeting. And the way I read that, it means that what has to happen forthwith is for us to tell the clerk to call the election. And fourth, so forthwith relates to when we tell the clerk to do something, not when the special election has to be held. And I and I think it makes a ton of sense to have the, uh, special election for mayor be on town meeting day, both because it costs a lot of time and money to hold the special election. Two, we are likely to get a better turnout. You know, for people to come to to vote for that, which is, I think is an important thing. With regard to the council vacancy, one of the questions is what process we would go through. Um, and the last few times we've done it, we've required anyone who wanted to be appointed to collect the petitions with signatures, the same as if they were asking to be put on the ballot. And I I would think that that's the way we should go so that people show some um, modicum of support before they, uh, they get considered.
That's, that is correct. That's been the practice. And the other so so you're you're correct, there's no more vacancy until the position steps down. However, we have in the past, in anticipation of a vacancy started the the process in advance. In fact, the the mayor replaced Sarah Jarvis and she said, I'm resigning as of with the end of this, six weeks from now or something. And we had the whole process and the mayor was appointed and didn't actually take office till the next meeting and Sarah was still at the last meeting voting. So um, you know, I think we could, in in the case of an appointment, I think you can start the process, you just can't the person can't take the seat, obviously, until the prior seat is vacant, vacated. Uh, and maybe, you know, I don't know, I'd look to the city clerk for a detailed ruling whether they actually, I think what that I guess, I think what happened is they've pointed you at the close of the meet, you took office at the close of that meeting.
Yep.
I recall. So she resigned as a adjournment of that meeting and then you avoided as a
Yep.
And, um, and I think we've done something similar in the past. So you could, you you know, if you if you wanted to appoint someone on December twenty first or one of the January meetings, you know, we could start that process now if that's what you chose or you could choose, like I said, not to appoint it. Want to, that's that's, it's both of these are but in, you know, I think it is fair to the public to know what we're going to do. And how how we communicate, what time we allow for people to get involved. There's going to be an appointment, what our process looks like, deadlines are.
Uh, Lauren?
Yeah, I mean, I I think my inclination at this point would be, I mean, I think town meeting and we can forthwith to direct John to do that for the mayor's seat. I mean, I would be inclined to follow the recent practice of um, someone, you know, asking for petition signatures, um, but lining it up to appoint someone. I mean, it's just all being down two people is not giving people as you know, robust of representation as I think they deserve, even if it is that short window. So I think it's worth um, getting, you know, another voice in here, especially, you know, in budget season and lots of important decisions, just having, you know, more uh, community members participating in that seems good. So that would be my thought at this point.
And would you want to uh, well, I'm going to just going to put this out there, like, what is the timing that you would anticipate as ideal for an appointment? And you have to have an answer for that right now, but that's, that's a question. Um, Carrie, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I'm just going to agree with Lauren and um, and echo all of that, that I don't think we want a separate election, but I do think we want to to elect a new mayor on the city city meeting ballot and to try to get some a replacement for Connor in quickly. Um, I'm not sure what your question just now was about timing. What did you mean by that exactly?
Well, so just thinking about the, thank you, um, by the way, so one possibility is that the timing for an appointment could happen as soon as the twenty first. Uh, and have it like, sort of similar to when I was appointed, take effect on the adjournment of that meeting. Or do we save it for, uh, the next meeting when there is a, you know, a actually a vacancy? Or I guess, you know, do we do it before the twenty first, you know, to take effects, you know, at some later point? I guess those are really like the three options. Or I guess a fourth option would be to just be down a person until town meeting day. And it sounds like we're not people are not, I don't think we can do that.
This is your policy call, but is, you know, you'd actually be down two people.
Right, right, exactly. Um, Carrie, go ahead, Ace.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so what I was, what I was advocating for was as soon as possible. And so if that means if that we could appoint somebody to begin on the twenty second, you know, I don't know if we can, if we can appoint them to some point in the future, but I, if at that twenty first meeting, we could say, okay, you're appointed starting tomorrow, so that we don't, because we can't have two people on at once.
The vacancy doesn't exist yet. So I don't think you're empowered to take any action. I think even if it's a minute later, even if you know who you're going to appoint, that's different. You know, uh, the moment after the resignation, but I don't think you can you can do any act to appoint them in advance of that second after the resignation happens.
So does does that mean we can't make an appointment on the twenty first?
As long as you did it, as long as it was done in the in the correct order. I mean, as long as the resignation was received and then the appointment was made, I think it could be in the course of the same meeting. Because the vacancy exists as soon as
And then the appointment was made. I think it could be in the course of the same meeting because the vacancy exists as soon as the resignation happens. It's just that it doesn't exist before.
Okay, I'm just remembering that is different.
When it didn't quite, I mean, there, it was clear that Sarah was resigning as of adjournment of that meeting and, and was appointed as of. Post adjournment for that meeting, but.
I, I, I'd stick with the letter of the.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could just do, you could wait. Yeah, I think we could figure that out. We could have, right, you know, Connor could do his official resignation or council reports. And then we could have an agenda item after that to make the appointment and.
That's, that's, that's what you'd want to do.
And so I think that part could be figured out. I think the real issue, and that probably makes the most sense because we only have two meetings in December, the fourteenth and the twenty first. And there's Thanksgiving in between. So if we were to recruit, you know, to give people time to get their signatures, to think about it, to get the word out. Um, and if you appointed someone on the twenty first. Assuming we do the timing right, that gives them the holidays to at least look over the budget material. And, you know, because we, January is a pretty heavy budget unless, unless we finish in December. Then we could have less meetings in January for this new person. So.
Okay, um. Fair enough. Lauren, go ahead.
I have a vague recollection that we might've done a special meeting, like done it a little, just knowing how busy the budget meetings are, like. Maybe we do it a different day where, um, so it doesn't get bogged down in that, which.
Do you mean?
I feel like that's how we did it for Dan's, like we had done like a short special meeting to look at applications and make the decision because it was.
So doesn't leave us a ton of runway there? Uh, cause we could do like the twenty second, you know what I mean? Like we were going to do it on a different night. Anyway, it's, it's. It might be that we get, have enough interest that. It could, it could take us a while. Do you know what I mean? Like there could be. Right, like, I mean, best case scenario, we have a lot of applicants and. They're good and we have a lot to talk about.
Right, you have one appointment that took multiple meetings to.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. That's right. So anyway, that's, so thank you. That's, maybe we'll know. So, but I, I also feel like, so let's just play that out a little bit. Um, let's say it was on the twenty first. That means that people would have to. Get their signatures in by the sixteenth.
Right.
Right, which means that. Gosh, that is, that is exactly a month away. That's with a, with some holidays in the middle. That is a, that's, it seems a little bit quick, but it's like, it's on the like quick side of reasonable. Um, I think, but, um, yeah.
See, the other option for that, um, is the January fourth, you have a, a budget workshop scheduled for January four. There's nothing else on the agenda. Um, so in theory, you could have the applications due by the twenty first. Cause. I don't know if it was going to apply over the holiday, Christmas holiday anyway.
Yeah.
And then take them up right at the beginning of the, at that point, you both are off. So we don't have to run into that problem. Take you, do the first order of business on the fourth would be the point. When you remember, when you remember. And then, um, and then go on to a budget workshop after that.
Right, and then.
Assuming we haven't finished.
And at that point, you would have five.
Five members.
Which, you know, fair enough, you'd need four, so. Um.
That's true. You do it on the twenty first, you know.
Well. Depending on.
Connor would have resigned.
Oh, that's true. Right, that's true. That's true. Yep, yep. That's true. Um. Right, right, exactly. Um, I want to go to Peter Kelman. You've got, you had your hand up for a little while. Thank you, Peter. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, since I was the person who asked you guys to, um. Now soon, thank you for that. I, I've thought about this quite a bit and I'm just gonna, I'd like to make an argument against the approach you're suggesting. And here's why, two reasons. One is. A new person coming on for less than two months, especially if you do this January idea that you just talked about. Is going to have a learning curve right in the middle of budget season that I think is unreasonable. I just don't think that's going to work. Particularly if you don't appoint the person until the, the beginning of the first budget workshop. Um, and on the other hand. Whoever does get appointed is going to have an unfair leg up by appointment. On being elected in, uh, in March. And also, when, when do the March, when do the people are going to run for office? In, in, in March have to register. I, I can't remember, but I think it's in early January, maybe. Uh, so. I don't buy the idea that you're going to be down. You're going to be down too. That's the mayor and Connor, right? There's no more down than that, right? So you're going to have an odd number. Odd numbers are good for voting. You guys have been together for a long time.
To be clear, noting Peter, that they actually require four votes to pass something.
Yeah, okay.
Even if there's five members.
No, no, I know. I, yeah, I understand.
Four votes would still be required.
What's that?
So if there were six members, four, six people, still four votes would be required.
I, I know it does. That's what I'm saying. I don't think you're gaining anything by doing this and you're going to open yourself up for anger. That you've handpicked basically the person who is going to get elected because of their incumbency. And that, might I remind you, that happened before with Jack. There were some people in town who were really angry. That Jack got appointed and then that gave him a leg up and, you know, he, he, you know, he had incumbency. Jack, that's not a criticism.
Well, I don't want to be argumentative, but no, but it's an important place of information. Jack got appointed. In, uh, March, right after the election for a full year, April, but it was for a full year's term. It wasn't for just a month or two.
I, I know. I understand that, but I'm just saying.
Wouldn't go short for a year.
What?
We wouldn't run short for a year. But we, I think the question is, do you run short for a month or two? That's the witcher post.
No, 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 I know. I, I'm, no, I understand that you, you absolutely needed to do it for Jack because that would have been the whole year. I'm just saying that the perception on the part. Of the electorate is that you guys would be handpicking by appointment. Somebody who then, two months later, like with Dan, two months later would run and win. Uh, I, I, I just want you guys to think about it. Is it, you really gain that much by filling that seat now? I, I just don't see it. You, the number of votes you're going to need to pass something is exactly the same. You're talking about an experienced group of five people. That's sorry. Yeah, five people instead of having five experienced people and one utter novice. That you guys are going to have to be explaining everything to. Uh, just my opinion. I'm, I'm going to back off.
Thank you, Peter. Um, John, you have a comment?
Yeah, I don't usually get involved in discussions like this, but just as the arbiter of elections. I think it's important to remember that it's easy to slide into this, talking about it as some sort of administrative issue. We are talking about the election of a, of a representative body, which means the represent, the full representation. Of every citizen equally has to be the full stop. Final consideration and the rest is details. And that means leaving, you know, spots in some districts unfilled. Changes that level of representation for folks in that district. And I just, from my perspective, I think that should be an absolute nonstarter.
So you would advocate that we do it immediately?
I, as, as soon as possible, because that's, that's why this body exists. That's how, why the whole system exists and to, to. To, to, to go against that just because of administrative convenience or a, a concern about perception of how it's done. Okay, you know, I recognize all those things are important, but at the end of the day, what's really important is that everybody in town is equally represented in. Certainly the budget, which is probably the biggest thing you all do.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, well, I think we should, uh, well, okay, we back up. What I'm hearing, um, is that. We should probably have a motion to direct the city clerk to. Hold an election for the mayor. Well, oh, right. Sorry. Just kidding. Not that one. Um, in anticipation of a vacancy for Connor. We probably need a motion about posting or a- asking for applications or posting that position.
Have them do December sixteen for consideration on December twenty first. You can always. Carry it forward if you don't, you know, if you want to get more applications, I mean, you can do what you need to do, but. That, that seems to be, that is a month. Even, even with a holiday and. I, though, yeah.
Okay.
The only other question, so I, I personally, I fully support the, um, the notion that you've got to get signatures. I'll just point out that, um, I think. The last time we did this one, council member Morton was because of the pandemic, we did not require signatures. And I could be wrong about that, but.
No, I got signatures.
Okay, good. Excellent. I will be quiet.
You get signatures. Okay.
Thank you.
Um. Okay, uh, is there, so it would be useful if we made that motion today to give folks as much. Time as possible to prepare.
The word out.
Um. Yeah.
And it would be for District Two, not Gen. So.
Yeah.
That's the.
Uh, is there a motion, Jack?
I will make that motion. And just to be clear on what, what the motion is, the motion is that we intend to appoint, uh. A replacement, a temporary replacement on, uh, on December twenty first, that, uh. Petitions with the bearing the signatures equal to the number of signatures to put a council candidate on the ballot will, will be due by December sixteen.
For the District Two.
For the District Two vacancy and, uh, the anticipated vacancy. And the clerk, yeah, I don't know that the clerk needs to do anything between now and then, except to.
We, we do the, we do the, the manager's office usually does the publicity around it and the clerk accepts the petitions and certifies the signatures.
Just, just like any other signature, the clerk gets for him.
Yep, okay.
Yes, Lauren, is, is in the motion, it's signatures and there's an application also, yes, or is it just getting signatures and names?
That in the past, right? We had an app, had them fill out the application form.
For like the general committee.
Committees thing to get background.
I think it's helpful. I think it's probably.
It's fine. We can put that in motion too.
Okay.
I don't recall if I had to do that or not, but.
I don't know if it existed.
But it's fine.
Um, is there a second? Okay, uh, any further discussion about this? Okay, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed. Okay, so the motion passes unanimously, so we do not need to do roll call. Thank you, everybody, for having this discussion and helping us get some clarity around it. I think, um, that will be, uh, good to get the word out.
We'll try not to change our minds in the.
Uh, okay, so.
You can resign newly elected positions and stay here.
Another option. Um. So. Uh, I didn't check with you ahead of time to see if we think that there's going to be any votes coming out of these executive sessions. Um, but just in case, maybe we should do council reports now. Um. And I mean, it's, it is eight thirty nine. Do we, I, I feel like we should do our council reports. Then take a, take a break and then go into executive session. Does that sound reasonable? Okay. Uh, Donna is not here. Okay, um, Carrie, go ahead.
I do not have anything for a report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, Jennifer.
I'll pass.
Great, thank you. Jack.
I'm also passing tonight.
Uh, Lauren.
Pass.
All right. Well, I, I guess, so this is the first meeting that I have had since the November eighth election. And so I just want to thank. Everybody, uh, first of all, who voted, thank you to everyone who, um, who supported me and. Uh, I'm really looking forward to, uh, representing the Washington District, uh, in, in the, in the Senate. Uh, it's going to be great and. Yeah, and also it's going to be really hard to leave this group. Um, but more on that later. Um. Uh, John.
Really feel like there was something I needed to report to you guys, and I don't remember what it was, so I guess I passed too.
Okay, Bill.
Um, I just have a couple of things. Uh, one is somewhat substantive, um, at, as we go forward in the next meeting. We'll be presenting the budget at the next meeting. We did have our budget congress today with staff. Um, shockingly, it was done by noon. Uh, was scheduled all day for today and although for tomorrow. Um, so I think, you know, it's go bigger, go home, I guess, was kind of it. So we'll, we'll be putting the fine tuning on that, but we. We will be suggesting, and I want to be clear about this, so everyone has time to think about it. I think is, you won't, it'll actually affect this budget, but I will be recommending that we consider. Putting on the ballot a charter change to implement the local sales tax. Um, it now, and you know, we would be getting the revenue from, uh, sales of, of cannabis, which is a new, uh, probably high sale. And also, uh, a couple of years ago, they changed, so Amazon revenues are now available. So what was. I gotta, I've got to fine tune these numbers, so we won't take it with the bank, but what was, I think, eight or nine hundred thousand dollars in potential revenue is now closer to one and a half million dollars a year for us. So I want to, I want to vet that and make sure I'm not exaggerating, but it's real money and it certainly seems like given budget and inflation. Pressures on our budget, uh, to, to be able to bring another revenue stream in is worth a policy discussion and perhaps a vote. That's your, going to be your choice, but. I want to give everyone clear, it's going to be part of the budget recommendation that we do that. So, uh, there's that. Then I think there's a couple of other ballot items just to be thinking about, uh, as we go forward. Um, we talked at the last meeting about whether to continue with CVPSA. They'll be attending our meeting on the fourteenth to talk about their budget request. But again, I just think that's something we want to consider. Do we want to put that on the ballot? Don't have to decide now. Potential ballot item, we're still checking this out about the stormwater utility, whether we need one to enact stormwater utility and whether that is a charter change. Uh, or not. Um, so that's a possibility. And then we just added tonight a potential bond reauthorization. And actually, it's not out of the, well, we'll talk about that later, but it could actually have two of us.
Oh.
Uh, well, so that I'm, I won't try to be obtuse. Uh, this is more for later, but getting food for thought. We are. Preliminary numbers for the Confluence Parker now at the two million dollars. Uh, and, you know, I think originally we thought this was going to be a five hundred thousand dollar project. Grew to one point one or one point two million dollars. The city at last year's vote put six, well, we approved a bond for one point eight million. Including six hundred thousand for the Confluence Park. Now, it's not as specifically worded as the pellet stove was, so it's, it's a little vague or. Um, so it could be, we just do the other items and never issue that bond and it just, we have that extra bonding, bonding capacity. Or, uh, potentially go to the voters and ask to reallocate that to say, which a club or, you know, some other place that would. The funding, I don't think would really be appropriate for paving that, but, um, you know, considering that we may be. It's possible we won't be putting as much into the capital plan as we had hoped. Spoiler alert. Um, it's possible that finding another place to do some capital, so something to think about. And then I, and I'm obviously the question, just if we need a wording change from pellet stove to other. Uh, net zero type activities. So those are some possible ballot items to keep in mind, sticking of as we go into the next. Um, meetings and, and, um, just to be also clear, we have a budget workshop scheduled for December, for January four. But the fourteenth and twenty first are supposed to be working budget meetings, so you two don't get out of them. So the fourth is there if we still need another, another workshop and then of course the. So the fourth is there if we still need another, another workshop, and then, of course, the, the next, there's two meetings that are the actual required public hearings. And then we have a potential workshop in between, so. All kidding aside, if we finish by the twenty first, the new person will just have to go through the public hearings and not necessarily the decision process. So, bring your pillows, we'll stay late those two nights, get them done. Um, and then just a last notice, and speaking of budget, I, the mayor just sent out her budget survey to. You all, and we issued our informal survey that we've done the last couple of years out to, um, the public. See, I think we've already got a couple hundred responses back, we haven't looked, we don't know what they are, but we, they're back. Uh, and again, those are just to give us a sense of what people think, they're not binding, obviously, but it's just, uh, some public feedback as to. What's on people's minds. Um, so that's all I have, other than. So, the, yeah, I do have one other, well. We're gonna take a break right before you go, I just, there's a correction on which stat- statutory site we're going to executive session. When we get to that, I will.
Okay, we'll talk about it then. Okay, uh, so with that, we are gonna take a ten minute break, so we'll be back here. At eight fifty six to. And I anticipate going to executive session, so, um, we'll see you then. Right? Okay, so we're coming back from our break. Just as a matter of. Uh, logistics, because. The reasons to go into executive session are different, I kind of wonder if we have to come out of executive session for the one to then go into the other.
Technically, yes, but I think you could just say.
I think you could say, we're, take your executive session into this to.
To do this.
Yeah.
Should you then, second. Okay. Okay, okay. Um, and did you wanna change?
Yeah, so for the property discussion, it should, the proper site is one V S E three thirteen A two. And then the proper site for, um. Uh, cause I don't have the other one in front of me, the proper site for the personnel one is one V S A three thirteen A.
So that one's right. No.
Yeah, that's, it's a public records. So I, it's, it's a public records exemption, I'm sure Mary just picked it up instead of the meeting, so.
All right, well, so we have a, a long executive session motion to be made. Yep.
And I would, these, neither of these require the, the other finding, right? To be clear.
Go ahead, Jack.
For simplicity, I'll make two separate motions.
Okay.
One, I move that, uh, we go into executive session pursuant to. One V S A section three thirteen A two for the purpose of, uh, discussing a potential real estate purchase.
Further discussion? Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Hey, do you wanna do the other one right now?
Yes, I, I moved that upon the conclusion of our previously ordered executive session, we enter executive session. Pursuant to one V S A section three thirteen A three to discuss, uh, personnel matter. The appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Okay, so, and did we determine whether or not we anticipate having a motion coming out of?
Need a motion coming out, Alec needs the executive session link. He just texted me before.
Okay, so we will only be coming out of executive session to adjourn then, okay? Uh, okay, well, thank you, everybody who joined us, uh. Either in person or virtually.
Oh, we need to, we need to stay in.
We're staying here.
In our lot, but, but those of us.
We all have to log in to.
Log out of this and log into the next one, yeah.
So come back here, and then you're all good, as long as we can still have the sound and everything from the folks on a different link. Right.
Cool. Thank you. What's that? Yes, yeah.